Welcome to another broadcast of the Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Thursday mornings at 9:30 at the Lorraine County Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, fourth floor, downtown Elaria. These are public meetings, and as always, you are invited to attend.
Would you stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to the, whatever day this is, July 31st, last day of August, our July 31st Commissioners' meeting, and I get the dog today. Oh, this is a nice little dog. He's well-trained. This week's featured pet at the Lorraine County Dog Kennel is a male terrier mix. He was picked up on the west side of Lorraine. He's in cage 45 and is eligible for adoption on Saturday, August 2nd, at 3:00 PM. Come here, puppy. Can you sit down? Can you sit for a nice picture? Oh, no. No, sit. Can you sit in there? He says, "Who are all these strange people and why are they looking at me?" Come on out to our dog kennel and look at all the dogs available, or, as Lori always says, you can check our website. He would make a nice little pet. Take him home, Betty. Look, he's dancing for you. He's trained. General spends a lot of time training these little dogs. Thank you. Okay. Thank you, Yvonne. Madam Clerk?
At 10:30, Senator Woinovich's office is going to be here to meet with the Commissioners, and then at 12:00 to 1:30, they're going to have office hours for the constituents. And then, do you see Ann Eckstein? She's supposed to receive the proclamation for CSCA.
Who is?
Ann.
Oh, she's here.
Want to do that?
Okay. Here. That's what you call delegation, huh? Good morning, Ann. Would you like us to read all this?
What do we have to do?
Well, do you have a few comments that you'd like to make?
Yes, sir.
Well, why don't I just say, you just stand there, I'll say, "In the matter of proclaiming August 2008 as Child Support Awareness Month throughout Lorraine County, we have proclaimed, the Commissioners have signed, we give to you, and we will welcome your comments." How's that?
Thank you very much.
Probably better than read that.
Thank you.
You're going to tell us good stuff anyway.
Oh, yes.
My name is Ann Eckstein, and I am one of the administrators of the Lorraine County Child Support Enforcement Agency, and I want to personally thank Ms. Blair, Mr. Kallo, and Ms. Kokowski for the proclamation that they have just handed me declaring August Child Support Awareness Month in Lorraine County. Governor Strickland has declared Child Support Awareness Month, August, to be Child Support Awareness Month throughout the state of Ohio. As you probably know, all child support in Ohio is mandated to be paid through a local CSCA. Ohio has 88 counties, therefore 88 CSCAs. In Lorraine County, we have approximately 31,000 cases. Out of those cases, 65% pay on a regular basis. However, some occasionally miss, some are chronic non-payers, and some are just plain unlocatable. In our county, we have currently about 6,000 people who have had their driver's licenses suspended for non-payment of child support. The suspension of driver's licenses is one administrative enforcement technique that we employ, that the legislature has seen fit to give us as an administrative power. During August, we offer a special program. People who have had their driver's licenses suspended for non-payment of child support may have them reinstated by paying one month plus $1 on their order. Traditionally, it's three months plus a dollar on their order. So as part of child support awareness, we are reaching out to those who are in default of their orders. These payments can be made at the local CSCA, which is located at the corner of Lake Avenue and 254. Last year, we collected over $94,000 for the parents and children of Lorraine County in the month of August as part of our driver's license outreach program, and we are hoping to meet that goal this year, even though times are a little tougher. So I would like once again to thank the Commissioners for their support this year, and I look forward to your continuing support in the future.
Thank you, Ann. Ann, would you tell us your title?
I am the Administrator of the Child Support Enforcement Agency.
And congratulations.
Thank you very much. Our current Administrator, as you know, is retiring, and that will be effective in about 60 to 30 days.
Thank you. Any questions, Commissioners?
Thank you, Ann.
Thank you.
Okay, Madam Clerk.
At 9:45, we're going to have a hearing on Greenview Drive for the vacation, and at 10 o'clock, we're going to have a presentation in regards to the update on Glide. Under Resolutions Number One, Job and Family Services Bills?
Still moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Investments?
Still moved. Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Transfers?
Still moved. Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kallo?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Requisitions?
Still moved. Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Travel expenses?
Still moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Under the airport, approve and enter an agreement with Richland Engineering Limited Mansfield to perform engineering services. This is a 36-month contract, the amount of $30,000, with reimbursable expenses of $3,000, and an additional 24-month extended contract, if utilized, will be $20,000 plus $2,000 in reimbursable expenses to be paid from the airport professional services account.
Mr. Cordez, would you like to update us on this?
I can, Madam President. We went to an RFP process to realign ourselves with some new assistance that is required when we do our FAA grants. This is just some of the continued updating and housekeeping that we've been doing since we took the airport from being a regional board to jurisdiction county commissioners. And we require engineering service and updated the master plan and work at the airport, so we have people on the contract, but the contracts were old. They were from when the Airport Authority was still the approving entity, and so we felt it prudent to go out with the RFPs and select companies that the Board of Commissioners were going to do business with, have contracts with the Board of Commissioners. So this process was undertaken by Mr. Twining over the past four or five months, and Mr. Twining isn't with us this morning because he had another meeting at 10 o'clock.
Thank you. Also moved?
So this isn't for a specific purpose, then? It's just...
There's some ongoing work now that needs to be worked on, but it's not, it's generally open-ended, depending on what our needs are under the FAA grants with getting money for taxiways or... We have, right now, we have quite a problem with some drainage ditches out there that should have been covered years ago, and we're trying to work on that. Anytime we put in for the FAA money for various work on the tarmacs, taxiways, and so forth, we have to produce engineering documentation to support the method that we want to go about it, so we definitely need that kind of assistance, but we're not working on anything that's big right now for this project.
And this $30,000 is in their budget?
Yes, we have the money in the budget to pay for this. We're not asking for any additional general fund allocations, Commissioner.
Okay. Also move?
I'll second.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Under the Commissioners authorize various personnel actions as indicated on the summary sheet for employees within jurisdiction of Lorraine County Commissioners.
Mr. Cordez, again?
Thank you, Madam President. I do have a number of personnel issues this morning, new hires, gold makers, or, sorry, potential new hires. I also have a new labor contract that's been presented to the Board that we need to go over. I have an executive summary, we can talk about that. Potential purchase of real estate, and probably a matter of... I'm not going to talk about that. So those will be the three issues, and there's topics that are allowable under the Sun-Side Law. So at the conclusion of a regular board meeting today, I'd like to request an executive session so we can discuss those issues. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Under solid waste, approve Policy Committee Financial Subcommittee Recommended Changes to Lorraine County Solid Waste Management District Grant Funding Guidelines for 2008 through 2012 and Volume-Based System Program specifications.
Mr. Billman? We had this item on the agenda a couple weeks ago, and there were some questions that Commissioner Kokowski had, and we delayed action pending perhaps the outcome of some negotiations, et cetera.
If I can make some comments. I spoke with Mr. Billman this morning, I spoke to Linda from Carlisle, and we probably need some comments from Linda, and/or I see Barry's here, the Township Trustee, as to the negotiations with Allied and where they're leading to.
You guys want to go?
Barry, Linda?
I will do some comments after Linda's spoken to you, but I think the situation is well in hand, and she will explain more on it.
Good morning, Commissioners. Good morning, Jacob.
Sorry to put you on the spot, but probably jurorium put more than anything else, that's where our concerns were at, so...
That's okay. I wanted to thank the Commissioners that you had offered to help us in negotiations. We have proceeded without you. Fine that we did not need you, but I thank you for your offer. We are negotiating with Allied Waste, and we are happy with the negotiations at this time. We aren't ready yet to share any of the plan because we have not any signed agreement.
But it is moving forward to a happy conclusion, I hope?
Yes.
Okay.
Very much so.
Do you have any other comments? Barry? So you would be in favor of these changes as a Carlisle Township resident? The changes to the plan that we're voting on today? Are you comfortable with this?
I'm unaware of some of the changes. If you could go through them, that would be good.
We'll let Dan Billman, because I don't have that in front of me. I know one was, instead of having recycling every week, it could be on a bi-weekly basis. Some other things refresh our memory.
The changes are pretty much grammatical edits, and I believe that probably they could have done this without going through the process of the editing or the subcommittee changes, but it, the changes do help some of the Townships and entities to clarify some of the things that are in the plan. There's actually five, actual five items, if you'd like me to go through those.
Please.
The allowable use of the grant funds, it's, we change it to a credit instead of a rebate, so it's a little bit clearer how the residents are possibly getting help with the funding of their curbside recycling. The, under Part A of the Volume-Based System Guidance, the language has changed to the following: "Curbside recycling shall be included in the base container system rates unless those services are segregated." This allows the, more flexibility to the communities if they wish to collect the recyclables themselves or have another recycler that is different than the trash hauler that's under contract. The, I believe that this language will allow the Townships or the cities to do it themselves if they wanted to, or do it in a different manner than what the contractor would do it in. The changes in Part C and Recycling System of Volume-Based Guideline Weekly Service was removed, and the guideline now states minimum of bi-weekly, twice-per-month curbside pickup. This puts a guideline in line with what Ohio EPA is expected to propose in their guidance and format document. This gives communities more flexibility in respect to the cost of collecting recyclables. The section also changes the second bullet as follows: "No charge for recycling services if the same hauler is used for trash collection." This clarifies that if the same hauler is used, the pricing must be combined for the customer. The intent of having, for having the resident get in and pay for the bill is to free communities from having to pay for the service and subsidize it out of their grant funds. Communities should not have to, need to approach the Commissioners now for any extra funding as they have in the past. Language is added to clarify that the yard management waste system is not mandatory but strongly encouraged. The narrative now states, "An additional goal of the volume-based program is for each political subdivision in Lorraine County to offer curbside yard waste management collection for single-family residents." It's strongly recommended. Within the verbiage of the plan, it was thought that it had to be mandatory, which in this, in changes, it isn't. So most of all the changes are verb, are editing changes and different wording to help with the flexibility from the Town, with the Townships and the communities.
And these are the recommendations of the Advisory Committee?
The recommendations are from the Advisory Committee, which they did, and that's their recommendation. Commissioners have the option of changing them if they like, but as the changes have been made, and I think that Carlisle and Allied is just waiting for the Commissioners to review this, vote on it, before they move forward with a signed agreement. But I can tell you that probably in talking to Allied, Dave Kitter, and Linda Jacobs from Carlisle, I think it's a very workable program. It's a very good program, and I think it's a win-win for not only Carlisle but other communities still. Any questions?
I, originally, when the Pay-to-Throw program came before us, I voted against it. Still have quite a few concerns about the Pay-to-Throw program, especially when this came up with the Townships moving to the volume-based system and then not getting their grant money, and who knows what else down the road is going to come before us, and so I'm still opposed to the Pay-to-Throw program as it stands, so I'm also going to vote no on these changes, especially until we have a signed, sealed, and delivered document for Carlisle Township.
If we both vote no, there's no agreement, though. I think we'll go forward. Do you want to make a motion, Commissioner?
I just have one question. We held this because, because of the working negotiations that were going on. You said that there was a timeframe in which we needed to act. I thought you did.
No.
Oh, you didn't, okay.
Lori, Commissioner Kokowski had asked me to set up a meeting between Allied, Carlisle Township, myself, Jerry Ennis, and Michael Greenberg. Well, we'd set the meeting up for August 5th, I think it was, and I don't think there's any need for the meeting now. Allied's come to the table, I think, very well, and I think Carlisle is happy with what's been going on.
Well, but my question was about the, the recommended changes. Is there a timeframe in which they need to be adopted?
The only timeframe is that Carlisle's waiting for the Commissioners to vote on them so they can get a signed agreement with Allied.
In other words, these recommended changes need to come before a signed agreement? Is that what I'm hearing?
Before the signed agreement, yes.
Okay, fine. I'll make the motion to approve.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
No. As a Carlisle Township resident, I welcome what you're doing. I thank you very much. I've got my recycling containers in my kitchen, and I will see you Saturday with all the stuff that I can have picked up. Thank you very much for your efforts.
Thanks, Commissioners.
Under Domestic Relations, approve request of funding of the amount of $29,699 from the Victim of Crime Act/State Victims Assistance Act grant. This will provide a salary of volunteer coordinator position for the Voices for Children program and cash match of $9,899, as required from the general fund.
Still moved. Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Under the Engineering, set on behalf of Amherst Township, the improvements of Copper Creek subdivision by Perry, the developer, and enter into one-year maintenance agreements. The storm sewers and concrete payment were constructed in '07 and will be maintained by the Township, and the water lines and the sewers were constructed and will be maintained by the city. Plats are recorded as follows: Copper Creek extending easterly from pile south Amherst Road, 1,406.70 feet or 0.266 miles; Kestrel Way extending northerly from Copper Creek, 228.9 feet or 0.043 miles, situated about 300 feet from pile south Amherst Road; and Falling Leaf extending southerly from Copper Creek, 198.5 feet or 0.038 miles, situated about 800 feet from pile south Amherst.
Still moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Madam Clerk, the county Administrator pointed out to me, depending on which clock you're looking at, that we should hold our hearing on Greenview Drive. I know. I was trying to get through the last one.
Well, you know, he gets a little antsy here. You gotta, you know, he's got a new suit on today, so...
The vacation will take ninety-five minutes, so, whichever's a pleasure.
She's running the meeting.
Well, I just, yeah, I was just pointing out that our public hearing is to begin, so that's fine.
It can be late, it can't be early.
Absolutely, Commissioner, you're in charge.
No, Teresa is. You've got to find that out. She's doing the reading.
Under the Prosecutor authorized filing of various grant renewals to Attorney General's Office for the Victim Witness Program, administered through the Prosecutor's Office. Said grant is effective October 1st, 2008 through September 30, 2009. $91,368 for two full-time victim advocates and one part-time victim advocate. Request from the Attorney General's Office is the amount of $68,526, with the local cash match of $22,842 from the Commissioners' General Fund. Upon acceptance of the grant application by the Ohio Attorney General's Office, the cash match will be paid to Lorraine County Prosecutor's Office, and $6,853 from State Victim Assistance Grant does not require match funds from the county.
Still moved. Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Okay, we'll do our public comments on the public hearing. Today's public hearing for the vacation. Request of Greenview Drive Carlisle Township. Public hearing proposed vacation of unimproved section of Greenview Drive Carlisle Township containing 2.0688 acres of land, being known as a 60-foot wide shown by the plat of Carlisle State Subdivision Number Two, is recorded in Volume 12, pages two and three of Lorraine County Plats Nine. June 5th, 2008, Board of Commissioners adopted Resolution 08407, receiving requests to vacate. This was forwarded to County Engineer for review and notified all utility companies for any easements of right-of-way. June 9th, Lorraine Medina Rural Electric called, and they have no facility in the area, and no more comments have received, been received from any utilities. June 16th, County Engineer reviewed petition request by Larry Country Club. The description and map prepared by KS Associates agrees with Carlisle State Subdivision Number Two, recorded in Volume 13 and Page Three of the county records. Larry Country Club is the only property owner abutting the road requested to be vacated. Unimproved, therefore, traffic and drainage would not be affected. Resolution 08457 adopted June 26th, received and generalized a vacation request and set up public hearings. June 16th, County Engineer reviewed petition request by Larry Country Club. That's the same thing I wrote. June 20th and July 7th, a notice to vacate was published in the Chronicle in accordance with Section 553.0104 and 05 of the Ohio Revise Code. Viewing took place on July 15th, corner of Overland Larry Road and Greenview Drive Carlisle Township at 10 o'clock.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Since this is a public hearing, if there's anyone here who wishes to testify on this matter, we would ask that you stand and be sworn in by the Assistant Prosecutor. Don't all stand at once. It appears there's no one who wishes to give testimony on this matter. Okay, well, then we can skip two, and three, and four. Since all Commissioners were present at this viewing, do you have any comments, Commissioner?
It's a beautiful piece of property. It'd be nice to stay in, natural.
Right. There's no road there. It's just a paper street as it is right now, and the Country Club owns all the property, abutting it and surrounding it, so it only makes sense to leave it as it is in its natural state.
I move the public hearing be closed. Second.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
And I move the vacation be approved as outlined. Second.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
And now, Madam Clerk. I think all the parties have arrived for the 10:00 AM presentation, yes. We'll just move to that.
We'll do the Glide presentation.
Please. Good morning, Doctor Church.
President Kallo, members of the County Commission?
She's the president this year.
Women rule.
Women rule.
Ted's just a member.
I apologize. That's... I apologize. Administrator Cordez, thank you very much for giving us the opportunity to give you an update on the good work that has been developing with the Great Lakes Innovation and Development Enterprise. We wanted to give you a current status report, but also to give you kind of a cumulative look at the success of this initiative, and we obviously have a significant support team here, helping us with this presentation, as you can see, but I also want to note that the Chairman of the Board of Lorraine County Community College is with us as well, Michael Sherman, to be supportive of this initiative in our community. You know, this all started in the 1990 census, when we observed that 31% of the workforce in Lorraine County was working for 15 companies, and we thought to ourselves at the time, boy, that's a huge part of our workforce vested in a very few companies. In the 2000 census, we discovered that only eight or nine of those companies were still doing business in Lorraine County, and our county's economy had transformed dramatically. 80% of the companies reflected in the 2000 census were employing 20 or fewer employees. So we had gone in a decade from having an economy built and based upon very large enterprises with large employment to an economy that was developing around small and medium-sized companies in our community. So we actually started an initiative in 1998 with Lorraine County Chamber of Commerce under the leadership of Frank D'Attilio and Lorraine County Community College to begin convening some conversations with folks across the community about what we could do to assure that in this new economy driven by digital technologies, we could enable all these small companies to grow and to thrive. We did an assessment nationally and compared Lorraine County with other thriving communities across the United States that were demonstrating how to succeed in this new environment of digital technologies, and one of the things we discovered was that our county did not have any infrastructure in place for what we call the Grow Your Own Strategy for Economic Development. As you all know, there are three basic strategies for economic development: enable the companies you currently have to expand and grow, attract new companies to come into your community, and third, to grow your own. We understood and recognized that the Grow Your Own Strategy is the longest term and perhaps the one that takes the most community commitment and focus, but we knew we needed to do that if, in fact, we were going to create new enterprises and new industries to sustain this economy. Formed a partnership between Lorraine County Community College, Lorraine County Commissioners, Lorraine County Chamber of Commerce, and belatedly the Ohio Department of Development, and created Glide, the Great Lakes Innovation and Development Enterprise, which has become designated in 2006 as the only Edison Technology Incubator located on a community college campus in the entire state of Ohio, and one of only 12 across the entire state. One of the things that has happened, and we're going to share with you in some greater depth...[1800.83] things that has happened that we're going to share with you in some greater depth is that the work of Glide, which started as a partnership among three, has become an integral part of our county's collective effort through the Lorraine County Growth Partnership to stimulate the growth and development of new enterprises and to support not only the Grow Your Own Strategy, but the attraction and retention strategy. If you look at the timeline, it's been an interesting journey, starting with the initial funding from the County Commissioners in 2001. And I have to say that as I look across the state of Ohio and participate in efforts of this state to transform the economy, this continues to be one of the very few examples where county commissioners stepped forward with resources and decided to make an investment in the Grow Your Own Strategy. So again, Lorraine County was a pioneer and demonstrated leadership in the transformation of this economy. Glide began operations in May. First clients began in January 2002. 2006, we were designated as the Edison Technology Incubator and in 2007 had such success that we had to move into larger quarters at the Entrepreneurship Innovation Center. Now, nothing can describe the story better than a picture. And so we're going to share with you a short video that Ron Yance has put together to commemorate the progress that we've made. And then we'll share some more of the detail.
Imagine not knowing how it will all turn out. Your only guide is vision. Motivation comes from need. Patience is key.
How many times we touch things and we don't know about the outcomes for a very long period of time.
It's like a snowball going downhill. Each time it turns, you see a little bit more grass.
When Glide was created in 2001, it was really the dream and the vision of the Lorraine County Commissioners, the Lorraine County Chamber of Commerce, and Lorraine County Community College.
It was really an outgrowth of the Digital Economy Task Force that had come together to look at the future of Lorraine County and how we could try to spur business and economic development and growth.
Growth. It takes time. The Great Lakes Innovation and Development Enterprise has certainly evolved since 2001.
This nurturing process of new businesses is slow and you really have to keep your eye focused on the ball.
I think it was a great investment, especially on the part of the Commissioners because it was unusual for us to do that, but I think it was necessary. And I think the proof is in the pudding and it's obvious that this was needed in Lorraine County.
Every organization has to transform itself and develop a niche within the whatever marketplace that they're trying to provide services. So I think that the evolution's been one that's been really good for Glide.
It's absolutely been a good investment. We need to help small businesses flourish and this is the best way of doing that.
In 2006, the state of Ohio invested in Glide and designated it an Edison Technology Incubator. The appointment spotlights the tie between education and economic development in our region.
Glide's designation as an Edison Technology Incubator has been one of the major developments in the last two years. Its recognition of five years of very successful service in coaching and consulting with and helping new businesses grow and develop.
And we're proud to say that we're the only Edison Technology Incubator in the state of Ohio that's based on a community college campus.
Glide's approach can be broken down into two fundamental points. One, the business assessment. Two, the ability to incubate a company. Overall, Glide has the knowledge and the resources to wrap a business approach around a good idea.
We oftentimes say that we're the first people that many of the entrepreneurs talk to other than friends and family. So they get an honest assessment of, from a business standpoint, what we think they can do.
I have a very simple perspective. I look at how many jobs we create and the quality of those jobs.
The Entrepreneurship Innovation Center, located on the campus of Lorraine County Community College, is the home of Glide. Jobs are grown here. Associated companies are incubated here.
It's more than that. It's the type of environment that it's in. It's a very collaborative environment. It's very open. It's great for stimulating idea creation and interaction. There are other colleagues and professionals in technology that helps us to, you know, help to bounce ideas off of and grow our business.
Being here with the advisors and the mentors at Glide provides us with guidance, strategic guidance in our business. It provides us with credibility in the community. It also provides us with networking opportunities with other leaders and businesses in the community and it keeps us focused as well as a startup.
Where Cutter Croi can focus on driving the business as opposed to just putting the basic building blocks underneath it. Glide provides those building blocks so we can focus our efforts on where they need to be focused, especially as a young company.
Glide has a very positive reputation, so we wanted to be associated with Glide. We wanted our company, T&amp;M Technology Solutions, to be associated with Glide because of their positive reputation in the community.
The feeling when someone is solely focused on your success, you know, we're constantly saying to ourselves, what did we do to deserve this? Because, you know, we're not paying for this. We are getting, someone is supporting Glide who is then helping us to develop our business with no benefit to them except the good feeling they get by helping smaller companies grow and helping build jobs.
That's the key, the jobs. Currently, eleven technology-based companies occupy the facility. These eleven companies have created thirty-seven technology and business positions within Lorraine County that without the incubator would likely be located elsewhere in northeastern Ohio. So how many businesses has Glide supported and consulted? In 2007, that number was 143. In 2008, it stands at 341.
What I would suggest their success is measured in how many companies that we incubate, which we are incubating many of them right now, and how long they prosper and grow. And we've had several very nice successes at long-term growth within those companies.
Glide's an integral part of our Lorraine County Growth Partnership. The innovation and development that they offer at Lorraine County Community College campus is unsurpassed in our area. As a small businessman myself, knowing that there's help out there, especially for the startups with the frontier dollars that are available, it's just irreplaceable and it's really needed in this area and it's really made a difference for our future.
The layers of Glide go deeper. In the fall of 2007, the Innovation Fund of the Lorraine County Community College Foundation began awarding money to promising technology companies.
The Innovation Fund has provided so much visibility to the importance of entrepreneurism and innovation in growing companies and jobs. And all of that focus has come through Glide and through Lorraine County Community College. And that's a wonderful way for us to raise the visibility of this part of the region as a place where things are happening.
It's been a huge boost to Glide. The numbers have been astounding. The number of technology-based businesses that we're talking to on a month-to-month basis is threefold what it was prior to Innovation Fund.
You know, it's one thing for folks in Lorraine County and this region to come to us and talk to us about their business opportunities, but the reputation now and the acknowledgement of this fund throughout the 21-county area in northeast Ohio has brought us people that we never would have talked to before. It brought them to Lorraine County. It's given us an opportunity to talk to them about actually locating here.
And I think that that will have a major impact on the kind of jobs and the kind of quality companies that we'll be creating as we move into the future.
The students on the campus of Lorraine County Community College and Glide's connection to them are yet another layer. Here you'll find a symbiotic relationship between education and economic development that is the intersection of today's innovation economy.
One of the things that's been absolutely extraordinary is the ability of students to walk across the hall and to join businesses in doing real-world work in helping these new businesses grow.
As time goes on, that'll build some very effective relationships between Glide, the co-located companies and their clients, and our actual deans and faculty and students on campus.
Glide. It started in the imagination of the community-based, college-led task force. That vision is active and growing today. It is driven by the celebration of innovation and the recognition of entrepreneurs and their place in our future, whether we can predict it or not.
Let's look just a little bit at some of the numbers on a cumulative basis of the progress over time. One of the things that has established a milestone is the number of entrepreneurs that have actually been advised and supported at some level through the good work of the Great Lakes Innovation and Development Enterprise. And we've reached one of those extraordinary milestones with over a thousand of these entrepreneurs being impacted at some level. Now, you know, the impact may be as simple as helping with a reality check around the quality of the business idea. You know, some folks present an idea and then walk away after the business assessment concluding, well, maybe I'll try something else. And, you know, that's a valuable contribution as well. But this includes all of those contributions to over a thousand entrepreneurs. We currently have eleven companies that are located in the Glide incubator today that are actually growing there. Twenty-six companies are currently working in an in-depth relationship with Glide, receiving not only business coaching, but assistance with access to intellectual property, support, financing, and other types of assistance. But, you know, the piece to me that really is the proof in the pudding is that over this period of time, over seven years, we have directly helped to grow 475 jobs of average value of $35,000 at the outset, at the beginning level of those jobs, and only growing from there. We've enabled these companies to acquire add-on revenue of forty-three million dollars, I'm sorry, add-on investments of $20 million and total revenue of 43 million, quite extraordinary. On a cumulative basis, over that period of time, note that we've had thirty-five of what we call these portfolio client companies. These are companies we're working with in-depth. We've actually incubated in the facility twenty companies. Currently have eleven there. We have only lost over that period of time two companies who have not succeeded, which is an extraordinary success rate. And what it really tells you is that entrepreneurs learn through that coaching process. So, you know, from the colleges' involvement, it's part of our educational mission with the student being the entrepreneur. From the economic development perspective, it is working with the potential driver of new job development and new industry development as well. The average length of stay in the incubator, in the physical incubator, is two years. Companies have stayed in that intensive relationship with Glide for a longer period of time. And we're accelerating at this point and accelerating in a rather dramatic way. One of the things that we have done with Glide that is somewhat unique in the Edison incubators arena is that we have taken the position that will not turn anyone away. Whoever comes with an idea for developing a business, we will advise and counsel and connect. Obviously, the Edison Technology Incubator is focused on those companies that have a technology base as the foundation of their business. But working with other partners like the Small Business Development Center, we have the ability to connect folks even with an idea that's not technology-based to the kind of assistance and support that they need. So as you can see, the percentage increase that we're seeing at this point is dramatic. Just a sense of the list of portfolio companies that we're currently working with, a wide array of organizations. Very interesting when you go back to the point that I made at the outset in terms of context. We have eighty percent of the companies in the county that employ twenty or fewer people. What we're doing is contributing to that base a set of technology-based companies that promise to be exporters. You know, what's great about exports is they produce wealth for our community that doesn't already exist here. So they are double benefit from an economic development perspective and enrich that small business development environment. Looking at the Glide performance metrics, this is fascinating in a couple of aspects. One is that if you look at the first five years of Glide, in many ways, we clearly were incubating the incubator. We were learning how to do the kinds of things that these businesses need to do. But even during that period of time, look at the job growth. In the last two years, something very special has happened that has accelerated the impact of Glide and the job growth that it produces. The drivers of that change include the ongoing commitment of support from the County Commissioners and the new support from the Edison Technology Incubator. The Board of County Commissioners were very ably represented with me in Columbus with Administrator Jim Cordez in convincing the Ohio State Department of Development that, in fact, the results we had produced were worthy of state investment on an ongoing basis as an Edison Technology Center. And as you all know, Administrator Cordez can be quite convincing and straightforward. And together, we were able to make it very clear that the Lorraine County Commissioners had taken the leadership with the support of the Chamber of Commerce and the College to put Glide in place, but in fact, we were producing for the state a wonderful technology incubating result that was worthy of funding. And so those two things continue. Without the County Commissioners continuing their support, the state support would be even more challenging. And they were extremely impressed that the local government was willing to put its resources on the line and leverage the state resources in the process. We also saw the launch of the Innovation Fund exposing Northeast Ohio to opportunities in Lorraine County. You saw some of that referenced in the video. And then certainly locating Glide in the Entrepreneurship Innovation Center was helpful as well. But perhaps nothing has been more beneficial than creating the Glide team as part of the Lorraine County Growth Partnership. You know, really, when you think about what we have accomplished as a community in the last two years, it's really extraordinary. As was recognized by Team Northeast Ohio with their innovation awards, as the community that had had the most success last year in the attraction part of the economic development strategy. With the landing of TeleTech and 800 brand-new jobs, it was a testimony to how a community working together can produce results that are greater than should be expected with the resources that are involved. So we've made some significant progress. Let me speak about the Innovation Fund just a little bit because many of you probably saw in the media in the last day or two here that the Third Frontier Network has just announced the investment of another $7.5 million in pre-seed funding for technology business development across the state. And the Innovation Fund of the Lorraine County Community College Foundation was the recipient of a half a million dollars of that right here in our community. So we had through the Third Frontier coming indirectly from the regional initiative of the Entrepreneurship Signature Program last year at $400,000. We showed them that we used that extremely well, produced significant results. We now are our own recipient, one of only four in the entire state, with Jump Start, with a Cincinnati organization, with an OSU, Ohio State University organization, and one of the only four pre-seed funds in the state to be recognized through this process. And so it tells you that the metrics that are being produced through this process are compelling. The Innovation Fund is unique in many ways. Our foundation used its philanthropic status to ask the Internal Revenue Service for a private letter ruling that would allow contributions to the foundation to be tax-deductible contributions that could be used to invest at the pre-seed level in new company development. A unique idea. It took the foundation three and a half years going through five IRS reviewers to get the idea approved, but it has been successful and it represents the only one in the state. And one of the reasons that the public good was established by the IRS is that we require every one of the entrepreneurs to give a student an every one of the entrepreneurs to give a student an educational experience through the implementation of their project. So not only are we investing in the development of these new companies and industries, we're also investing in the talent of the future for Lorraine County, pretty exciting prospect. It's a 21-county initiative that, as you heard from the video, has produced some wonderful results. Every one of those applicants that considers funding through the Innovation Fund ends up coming through Lorraine County, being exposed to the Great Lakes Innovation and Development Enterprise, being exposed to the Entrepreneurship Innovation Center into Lorraine County. And the number of those that have said, "Wow, things are happening in Lorraine County. We'll even consider locating here," is really quite gratifying. So we've had 10 winners to date, and as you can see, the development of this fund and the interest across the region continues to increase. The 631 data represents the latest round, final decisions have not been made. But what we know is that the Foundation Board will be investing about a million dollars this year in four rounds. Now we have the half a million dollars from the state for next year. University of Akron has committed $250,000 to help us match that, and we'll raise philanthropically the rest. So the idea is if we could invest a million dollars a year for five years, we could begin to change the culture and the environment of innovation in our community. Now, I can tell you about the program. I can lay out the statistics. I can applaud the contributors, but hearing from those who have benefited probably is the most compelling way to get a sense of what it is you've helped create with the Great Lakes Innovation and Development Enterprise. So I'd like to ask Mark Slavik from Cutter-Croy, one of the companies that has been a recipient, to offer his insights to you on what this has meant, what Glide has meant, and what the Innovation Fund has meant to him. Mark?
Madam President and County Commissioners, on behalf of Cutter-Croy and the other incubator businesses at our facility, I want to thank you for funding the program. It's, you know, we really kind of stumbled into this. I don't know if it was blind luck or just, you know, we were just truly blessed to find out about Glide when we were working with Tech Lift and with one of the Third Frontier groups. And Chuck Burchell said, "Hey, do you know about Glide? It's in Lorraine County." And being a Cuyahoga County person, you know, I had no idea about the Glide program in Lorraine County. When I came out here, you know, I was really floored by the whole program, the building, the approach, the staff, you know, Dennis and Cliff and the staff that they have were just, were great. As I had a chance to understand some of the products and services and environment that it offered, it puts us in a place where we can reach out and find out about resources. It's, Lorraine County is a neat place. I'm a former chamber member over at another, you know, in another city. I was, I've kind of stepped back because of my business. Lorraine's a neat place because everybody's interested in helping new businesses, and that comes across loud and clear. And that whole culture kind of funnels down through the Lorraine County Community College and over to the Glide program. So a little more than what I was going to say, but it's a neat place. It helps a lot that I can go to folks like, you know, David, who's kind of senior to me, you know, so there are guys that he's kind of blazed those trails in Banyan Technologies, and they're folks that have, you know, they've kind of experienced things, and I go to them often saying, "Hey, what do you know about this?" Or, you know, "How do you think we ought to handle this?" And also, I do the same thing with their Glide partners. So if we have a, if we have an offer, if we have a tough question, or we need an honest opinion, often I'll go to Cliff or Dennis and say, "Here's what we're thinking," and they'll say, "Ah, you know, have you thought about that?" And so it is a, it's a great opportunity to grow a company. We like Lorraine County. I can tell you, as we move forward and we're now selling product, one of our developers is looking to move to this area because she doesn't want to drive. She wants to be right near the office. So we like being here and we appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mark. And we also have with us David Levine from Wireless Environment. His company was just recognized by Jump Start with an additional investment in his organization going forward. So he's helping fill the pipeline for the whole region.
Thank you, Dr. Church. I'm another, like Mark, I'm another Cuyahoga County resident who has located our business here in Lorraine County largely because of Glide. And our company makes LED lighting, which should be, has a bright future right now because of the change from incandescent to LEDs. The technology aspect has been buffered or benefited from the Innovation Fund. We won the Innovation Fund and started getting those awards six months ago, and we put that money into patenting and developing the technology. That has gotten us to a point where, as Dr. Church said, Jump Start just recognized us with a $400,000 investment. The Innovation Fund combined with the help that Dennis and Cliff have given us at Glide were really the key elements. I would doubt we'd be where we are right now in terms of on the verge of growth, adding quite a few jobs over the next number of years, and building a business that should be a significant revenue generator for us and contributed to Lorraine County. So I really do appreciate the foresight that you had in creating this Innovation Fund and Glide, and just hope to continue to report good success from, as a result.
David, let me ask you to address the student internship that came along with the Innovation Fund and help them see the connection between developing the talent for the future as well as helping you.
Our biggest need from Lorraine County Community College student base was in marketing. And as you've seen, it's, marketing is, has been really turned upside down with the Internet, and this idea of word-of-mouth marketing is, a small company can seem big by getting to the right influencers on the, with blogs and different situations. So we hired Ashley Franz, who is studying at Lorraine County Community College, a real go-getter, and someone who wants to start a business of her own. So what we're doing is twofold. One, she's helping us build a word-of-mouth marketing. She's actually getting our products located on a lot of websites and getting us some really influential reviews that drive sales. The second thing is I'm helping her develop her business plan so she could start a word-of-mouth marketing business here. She lives in Amherst. And, you know, as someone who's 22-years-old, I'm really impressed with the amount of drive she has, and with a little bit of coaching, I think she's going to start a very nice business of her own.
Thank you very much, David.
Tell Ashley I said hello. She went to school with my daughter Tara. I haven't seen her in a long time. She's always been a real good girl.
Isn't that exciting to see the connections and to see it growing right here in our community? So I guess in conclusion, what the message I'd like to leave you with is that Glide is meeting the original goals of local economic development, certainly creating jobs through bringing startup technology companies to the county or growing them right here. You know, your $2.6 million investment over that time has leveraged a 29-to-1 result through an additional $75 million of added investment into startup companies at this point. So you think about return on investment of the dollars and the leadership you've taken, it's certainly, if you look at any one of the metrics, new jobs, new companies, success rates, location in Lorraine County, and add-on value being developed by these companies, it's been an extraordinary success. The Innovation Fund continues to be an important catalyst in that process, and our work with the state of Ohio through the Edison Technology Incubator continues to be a critical component. My sense is that our success with the state is through our demonstrated partnership in our local community. And I again want to thank Administrator Cordez for his leadership of the Lorraine County Growth Partnership and with Glide. I also want to thank Frank Tatillio because, again, going all the way back to the Digital Economy Task Force, it was Frank's leadership representing the private sector that really helped us mobilize this public-private partnership. So we thank you very much for your continued support, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, all of you, for being here this morning. It's wonderful that you came to us instead of us coming to you. Commissioners?
Wonderful program.
You have such a wonderful facility here, technology-enhanced. It's a delight.
And we've got to give Cordez kudos for that, too. Jeez, he won't be able to meet with him later. His head will be so big it won't fit in the door.
You did a wonderful job out there, Roy. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Did you wish to say something?
I do, Commissioners. I, I'm sorry, but I didn't mean to.
Go ahead.
The, I want to congratulate first the college on getting the $500,000 into the Innovation Fund. It was fiercely competitive, and you have a wonderful staff over there. And I know you had Tracy Green working on that. She's not here today. She does a fabulous job for the foundation out there for us. Marcia, Cliff, Dennis, Jim, I think we have the best team in place that I've seen since I've been working with you, as we're going into our eighth year now. And I've never felt more comfortable with the collaboration partnership and the things that we're able to do together. And we also have our SBDC with Paul going out there and working collaboratively right along in the Entrepreneurial Center, and we have our Team Tuesdays, and Cliff doesn't have people miss a day during the week. The spirit and the relationship building that's gone over the last few years is really paying dividends, and we're starting to get the recognition around the state that together we can make that big difference. And I want to congratulate all of you, and I look forward to working with you much more in the future.
Thank you once again. We really appreciate your coming today.
One last thing, ma'am. The President of the Lorraine County Board of Trustees, One County College Board of Trustees, is in the back hiding.
Dr. Church mentioned that. I want to go one step further and point out that he is an appointee of the Board of Commissioners. Mike Sherman, would you please stand?
Want to say anything, Mike?
Thank you, Mike.
I'll pay for that one, trust me.
Okay. Madam Clerk, will you go back to the regular agenda?
Well, we're right on Mr. Cordez now.
I know, but I think he said enough.
So we can skip.
Thank you. Do you have anything further, Jim?
No, not particularly, Commissioner. Just to remind you that I want to go into the executive session for the stated purposes. And I want to also congratulate you because today, when you saw this presentation, clearly your support and your leadership and vision always making a lot of things happen with our partners. And without those things, I'm not really sure where a lot of the successes that we've had in the last few years would be. And, you know, we're becoming more and more challenged, so we have to become more and more creative with the way we get our work done in the future. But it's a crucial time to be creating jobs and creating opportunities for folks in Lorraine County, and you guys certainly do not get enough of the recognition for all the effort and resources that you put into doing that. The unfortunate consequence is we have 99 failures for one success, and the one success is what makes the difference. So I just wanted to, I personally want to thank you very much for your, what you do here in Lorraine County. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Cordez.
Mr. Seresen, Assistant County Prosecutor.
Thank you, Chairman Blair. My name is Scott Sarazanonli, Assistant Lorraine County Prosecutor here, filling in for Jerry Innis. And once again, you'll be pleased to know that I have no report today.
Maybe we'll have you fill in for Jerry more often, even though Jerry's in the back of the room.
Commissioners' report.
Just wanted to let everyone know that the Ohio Department of Commerce is having Ohio Borrower Outreach Days. It's going to be held August 11th. It's a Monday from 2:00 to 8:00 at Lorraine County Community College. It's for those people who are in fear of facing a foreclosure. Thursday after the meeting, I had the opportunity to be in the LaGrange Parade and stopped in at the festival, and it was very nice. Friday, Ted and I attended the Homeless down at Black River Landing. They had a very nice presentation and great speakers and very good food. And then Saturday, I had the opportunity, they asked me to come down to hand out scholarships at Mexican Mutual down on 28th Street in Lorraine. Mr. Cordez and Dennis Chauver were cooking up steaks, and they, I don't think they got too many complaints. I think they did a pretty good job.
Just to feel, I thought I saw a commissioner playing volleyball.
Yeah. Normally, you know, you go to these events and you kind of go in and do what you got to do, and you leave, but that was such a great event, I ended up playing volleyball all night long with the adults against the teenagers, and the teenagers whipped our butt, but we had a good time. And that's the end of my report.
Yeah. The Homeless Dinner was very nice. Had an opportunity this, on Monday, to venture to Cleveland with John Zekulov from St. George's Renewables and Mike Challander with Lorraine Growth and the Great Lakes Wind Initiative to meet with the Cleveland Foundation, Richard Stobie, discussing the upcoming legislation that Department of Natural Resources is working on for alternative energy. It was a good meeting for an hour, hour and a half, and I met with Sue Morano yesterday as we discussed more on this, looking forward to pushing it through in the next 60 days. Also, Lorraine Relay for Life, had a great time. Brad, you missed it. I wasn't a good-looking blonde, but I was a blonde. It looks like Relay early numbers, raised about $17,000 more than last year, we're almost up to $50,000, so it was a very successful relay. I'd like to thank Mary Ann Campani, she did a great job. And while you're here, Mr. Billman, where are we sitting at on the Brookside High School Stadium, $15,000 request? Have you had a chance to look into where we might be able to find those funds at? I mean, football starts in a few weeks.
Very quick answer, no. As there's, the funding that the Commissioners would normally give out is pretty much depleted. It's down to probably around $6,000. That's why that, nothing's transpired on that at this time.
Can you work on it this week to see if there's something we can move around or another way to acquire those dollars so we can get this project done?
I will get ahold of you, and we'll see what we can work out.
Okay, thank you very much. End of my report, Commissioner.
Thank you, Commissioners. First of all, I would like to commend our clerk, who has submitted to the Ohio State House Museum photo project bios on 25 Lorraine Countians that she chose at random to, for their history to be displayed with a photo. And do you want to comment a little on that project, Teresa? I think it was very nice.
It was a long project.
Yeah, I bet it was.
In a week.
And I want to commend you for doing that, and I believe that this is going to be put up on our website as well.
I will.
Do that. And it was a very nice project, and I want to thank Teresa for doing that because it kind of languished for a while, and so she gave it life. Secondly, I was also at the Lions Parade. LaGrange is always very friendly to us. It was a nice parade.
Yes, it was very good.
And Elizabeth from Oberlin has given us a flyer on Women's Equality Day, which will be celebrated at the Oberlin Inn on Tuesday, August 26th, at 6:00 PM. If anybody's interested, we have information here. We're celebrating the 88th anniversary of women gaining the right to vote, and they always have a nice turnout, and they have a nice program planned. The Lorraine County Community Alliance will meet tomorrow, Friday, at 9:00 AM here in the, this room. We have, State Representative Matt Lundey has bought a new suit so he won't have a hole in his pants, and he'll be giving us an update on what's going on in his life. And Dan from the Ohio EPA will update us on Phase 2 stormwater issues. Tom Kelly from the Emergency Management Agency will give us a little information on flood disaster requirements. And then the big program will be on the Black River Wrap, and there are 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, I think, seven different people who will give us a little overview on what's going on. So anyone who's interested is invited to attend. And finally, I would like to announce that last week, the Commissioners approved the grant application to the Ohio Department of Development for the West Shore commuter rail project. There was a little confusion because there are two groups working towards rail on this line, and we are not to be confused with the North Shore. However, after we made that announcement and the grant was applied for, we also received a letter of recommendation to the Lieutenant Governor from our United States Senator Sherrod Brown, which I thought was quite nice, and so I wanted to let you know about that. The letter's here for the newspapers, if you're interested, and the agendas for the alliance are here, if anybody would like one. And that completes my report. Thank you.
Board Correspondents.
I move the reading be waived.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Claire?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Public Comment.
Anyone wishing to address the board? All right, seeing no takers, I move we go into executive session for the purposes outlined by the Administrator.
And I'll second.
Ms. Claire?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
But I believe we're going to meet with Dora first.
Correct. 10:30.
I believe she's here in the back.
Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Thursday mornings at 9:30 at the Lorraine County Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Alariah. These are public meetings, and as always, you are invited These are public meetings and as always, you are invited to attend.
Pedestrian injuries represent the second largest number in motor-related deaths. In the current report by the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration, of the 812 traffic fatalities for children ages 5 to 9, almost one-third, that's 254, were pedestrian fatalities. These numbers were just very staggering to me in this office. Most of these were from pedestrian crossings. Children not educated in crossing streets where there are sidewalks and obviously stoplights or where there are no sidewalks and there are stop signs. So basically, it was based on the fact that they aren't getting proper education or they hadn't any education on how to cross streets with sidewalks or without sidewalks. So that's what really got us motivated to look into this and do something about it.
County Engineers Office is quite proud to announce that the Safe Routes to School Program has been initiated throughout Lorraine County. We're very excited about this, to help these children from grades K to 4. Teaching them to walk the streets safely is very important to us. We've seen statistics that quite frankly shock us. Many times, we read and see stories of pedestrians being hit by automobiles in Lorraine County and it just tears my heart to see these children from K to 4 part of that. This program is to stop that, to help diminish those type of situations and educate these children on walking and crossing the streets safely. And we're quite happy to announce that.
Most of our workshop was developed and made in-house. Simulated sidewalks, simulated streets. We have actual working stoplights. We have the pedestrian crossing signs that actually work. We have operational railroad crossings. We also have the regular road signs like your pedestrian crossing, your stop sign, your railroad sign. So we have all of these different things that the children can not only visualize, but then we actually interact the children in those situations so they can not only see, but they can use these in their learning abilities on how to cross the streets with and without sidewalks. We've had so many good responses back from the children and of course, it's just like anything else with children, when you ask for volunteers, when you're talking in a group of 60 and you can only have eight, it's amazing at the hands that go up, you know, does anybody want to volunteer? Well, everybody wants to volunteer. We make them go over these skills that we're trying to teach them, not only the volunteers, but the group as a whole. So basically, we have the whole class interacting. So if they say left, right, left, behind you, in front of you, once, they say it at least eight or 10 times before the workshop is over. So we've had many teachers and many principals tell us. And we even had one child that came up to us and said, you know what, Ms. Fenske, we were going across the street the other day and we remembered, look left, look right, look left. So that was very rewarding. And so I think the repetition, the interaction with the children and with the items in our workshop is very important to them and to us. Before you even go into the safety part of it, they're in awe over the traffic light and then our railroad crossing signals actually work. So they're just like, oh, and we get up there and we tell them and we even give them some trick questions, you know, we'll say, well, we can see that train all the way down the track. Do you think we can make it because you're fast and I'm fast and we can run? And of course, they're very enthusiastic and no, we shouldn't do this. So we teach them that in some urban areas, you will not have the gates that come down to keep you actually from crossing, that you may just have two sets of tracks. And just because one goes by and the signals stop, doesn't mean that another one can't come from the other direction. So we tell them it's very, very imperative that they stay back from the tracks and they wait till those signals stop and to look both ways. And even once those signals stop, to look both ways and they should never run across the railroad tracks. They should walk and continue to look both ways because it's not safe and they could fall, they could injure themselves if they're alone, if they're not with someone. It could be very dangerous because not only could they injure themselves, they may not have help if there is a train coming because they are so small. And as you know, some of those tracks are very large and you're talking in kindergarten through 4th grade, some of those children are very small children. The main thing is, is that we tell them that only you know when it's safe. You have to make that ultimate decision. So make sure that you know that it's safe before you cross those railroad tracks or a street. One of the other things that we cover in the safety workshop, and it's also repeated in our video, children don't have that perception of the miles per hour. It's very dangerous. And the same thing with trains. We tell them that train could take, you know, forever, it's way down there, but we don't know the actual miles per hour. We decided to use two different videos. The first one is geared for kindergarten and 1st grade and that is Auto the Auto, put out by AAA.
Hi, kids. A lot of times, you have to walk to get to places. And when you're walking, you have to be especially careful of cars and bicycles. Oh, no, those kids are walking the wrong way. That's dangerous. I'm going to talk with these kids. Down at the clubhouse, they're talking about the safe way to walk on streets without sidewalks.
I say you can walk across the street anywhere you want, as long as you look first.
And don't get squished flat by a car.
That's a fairly simple way of looking at safety. There are actual rules and laws for walking.
Yeah, but the most important one is you don't get squished flat. Who's right, Maggie, Patrick or us?
I guess in a sense, everyone's right. The main idea is to get there safely, but there are some rules to help you get there safely, like don't run out into the street without.
The second video, we show 2nd, 3rd and 4th grade. And it is put together by the National Safety Council along with Honda and they developed the first humanoid robot.
Hey, Asimo. What's up, Asimo? How's it going? Asimo, this is Michael. Michael, this is Asimo. How come you dressed in a robot suit?
It's not a suit. I'm a real robot. My name, Asimo, stands for Advanced Steppin' Innovative Mobility. I'm the world's most advanced humanoid robot. I can walk forwards, backwards, and even climb stairs just like a human. So what's the first rule about crossing the street?
Stopping at curbs.
Correct. First, always stop at the curb. Then make sure no cars are coming. You want to look left.
It's clear.
Then right, to see if any cars are coming from the other direction.
That's clear, too.
Cars move fast. There might already be a new car to the left, so look left again.
Car coming.
See what I mean?
Okay, he's gone.
The kids love this. They relate to Asimo, as well as the younger children relate to Auto, who is an animated automobile. And he tells them about crossing streets. Asimo does the same thing and he actually goes through with the children and tells them how to cross the street at an intersection with a traffic light, with a pedestrian crossing. He also teaches them how to cross, because a lot of children at schools have parked cars, he goes over the issues of how to cross when there are parked cars. So he does a number of different things, how to cross the street when there are no sidewalks. So they both cover the basic skills. One is just geared a little bit more for the different age groups. Our response has been amazing, not only from the children. We have received numerous cards. We have, I have a whole box of thank yous from children from the schools that have participated in our workshop. We've had nothing but a positive response back throughout the communities that we've visited this year.
I think it was really nice because they had a real-life robot talk to you about safety and you got to actually do what he said was safe. He said when there are parked cars, to make sure there are no drivers in before you cross the street.
Um, I saw that we could, like, know what to do when there's like cars coming, not to go in the middle of the road so you don't get hurt. You have to look left, right, left, behind the shoulder, and then straight. If they don't know how to stop at sidewalks, then I'll tell them how to. If they don't know how to cross without sidewalks, I'll tell them how to do that, too, because that's what we learned.
Um, I think that it was good because I didn't feel like you had to look five ways, but to your left, right, left, turn like over your shoulder and then ahead of you.
I thought that crossing the road was really good for little kids if they don't know what to do by crossing the road.
It's a good idea because, like I said, the kids could walk through the whole process of crossing streets with a crosswalk, without a crosswalk, at the intersection, what happens if you're crossing in between two parked cars. Those are things that parents don't teach their kids. They go to safety town and they learn left, look left, look right, look left again and they go. And even my own son, who's a kindergartner, he just did safety town and I still catch him flying across the street. And all I have to do is say, Matthew, remember Asimo? And he stops and he thinks and he does all the steps that he was taught in the video.
It was a great refresher, especially for them, now knowing, you know, what to do and kind of even additional things that they maybe not have, may not have been told or considered before.
Most of the kids did their little safety program back when they were getting ready to go to kindergarten. They start out learning all those safety rules. Then as time goes on, if you don't reinforce those safety rules and keep telling them, just like we do as adults, we think we're safe. We don't have to follow those rules anymore. We can do what we want, we can take a chance and run across the road. And I think this program was very good at reinforcing the fact that even though we're growing up, we still have to be careful. We still have to follow the signs, we still have to follow the railroad crossings, especially around here in Amherst. We tend to have a little trouble with the railroad crossings and kids wanting to play on them. So I think it was a good review. I think it was done in a fun, learning way and the kids really enjoyed it. We're very happy to have everyone here at St. Joseph's School.
If it saves one life, we feel like we've made a contribution. It's our way to give back to the communities.
Every year in Lorraine County, hundreds of children are abused and neglected. Many are removed from their homes for their protection. Judges must decide their futures, but they need information to make these critical decisions. You can provide this information through Voices for Children. Volunteers are men and women from all walks of life with no special or legal background who work alongside attorneys, social workers, and other court employees. As an officer of the court, you find out as much as you can about the child. You will review records, interview parents and relatives, foster parents, talk to teachers, neighbors, and most importantly, the child. When the volunteer has a complete profile, he or she appears in court to recommend what is best for the child's future. You've heard the statistics on child abuse. Now is your chance to do something about it. You don't need any special qualifications, only the desire to protect local children who desperately need your help. To become a special advocate or for more information on our next training session, call Voices for Children today.
How you doing there? Here, have a treat, okay? No one can deny the loving devotion we get from our dogs and I think we all agree, we get back more love than we give them. I'm Dick Goddard. I'm reminding you, if you share your love with a dog, you'll never regret it. There is really nothing like a dog to spark up your life, whether you're a youngster, a senior citizen, or somewhere in between. And dogs have a whole lot of affection to share. Okay, is that good? You don't have to go far to hear heartwarming adoption stories.
With my husband is like saying man's best friend. He truly loves that dog. He feels it's part human. It's his second daughter, as Erica said. It's definitely a prize. She's queen of the house, basically. She's a good lover, she gives us a lot of attention. She's a good girl.
We had a cat before. We had Abby. And Abby adapted very well. She is best friends with that cat. She will not harm that cat in any way. She's amazing. I love her. When I'm in bed at night, Abby will jump up with me and she will pull the covers back and she will lay under the covers and lay her head on the pillow, just like a human.
I encourage anyone to go to the Lorraine County Kennel to adopt a dog. It's given our family great satisfaction and a great reward.
After, you know, a bad day at work or anytime you come home, it's just always nice, they kind of turn your mood around once they come, when you come in the door and they wagging their tails and jumping on you and it's a great feeling to know that they're happy to see you and that they love you just as much as you love them. She is good with our other dog. She's good with people, she likes attention and she likes to cuddle up with you.
It's funny, when Lily, when you kind of discipline her sometimes when she does something bad or she always seems to roll on her back and put her paws in the air and just look up at you with a sad look, so it's kind of hard to even get mad at her when she does something like that. So we kind of laugh at that.
And it's always amusing when she does get a spurt of energy and want to run around and I was like, oh my gosh, Lily's good to play now.
Yeah, it's like sometimes, like when I'm on the couch or whatever and she'll hop down and she always like tries to bite her own tail and then that kind of like keys on our other dog, Rocky, to chime in and try to, you know, bite her tail a little bit and then they start playing around a little bit.
One day, we came home with some food from, I just really wanted a burger, so we had a burger and I had it sitting on the tray table by the couch and I got up for a minute and got a drink, came back and Lily was licking her lips, she had eaten the whole thing. And I was not very happy with her, so I screamed and told Kurt to come down and get her away from me because I was just so upset, but we both lived and I was fine afterwards. One of the best things about adopting a dog from the kennel, at least for us, was again just giving this dog, who knows what would have happened to her, a new life and also giving our other dog a companion during the day. It's just fun to have the two dogs and take them for walks and watch them play and it brought us closer as well.
You know, it just makes you feel better as a person, that, you know, you're giving a dog a better chance to live a life.
Actually, I enjoy the exercise because I need to, trying to lose weight, Salem makes me get out of the house every day. And so I have to take him for a walk, even if I don't want to. And he's not that much trouble because he was pretty much housebroken when I got him from the pound. I really liked the older pet because Salem was kind of, whoever had him before, they really kind of housebroke him, so I didn't really have to go through the potty training deal. I just had to let him out and find a place for him to go. And I think older pets, especially for people who don't have children, are kind of good because Salem, he's real playful, but he's not, he gets tired and he lays down and he doesn't want to be bothered. doesn't want to be bothered. And that's fine with me. So he's not always wanting to play, you know, because puppies have a lot of energy. And Salem has quite a bit of energy, but sometimes he just lays on his pillow and he's like, "Don't bother me, I won't bother you." And sometimes when he wants to play, he wants to play, and that's okay. I got Salem at the Lorraine County Dog Pound. I found him on the internet, actually. He was, they had his picture on the internet, and so I called and he was still there. And so I immediately went over and looked at him. We went outside and played, and he jumped in the car and wouldn't get out, and there we were. So we rode our way home. It was love at first sight. He's a very good companion. I can always depend on him to be here and greet me with, you know, open arms when I come in the door. He's very protective of me, and he lets me know when anyone is outside or in the driveway. So I feel safe with Salem, you know, even though he's a small dog, he gives me a safe feeling just in my own home. If I'm having a bad day sometimes and I'm just not in a real good mood, you know, he'll come up and snuggle up to me like, "Hey, Mom, it's okay." I think other people should adopt a pet, and even an older dog. The Lorraine County Pound has so many wonderful dogs. All you have to do is go over there and look. I mean, even now, I still go on the website and I tell Salem, "Don't you want a little brother or sister?" Because they have all these little cute dogs over there, and they all need good homes. And if you're looking to adopt a pet, I suggest you try the Lorraine County Dog Pound first. I mean, you pay for the license and just a nominal fee, and you got a great dog and a great companion and somebody that's going to be in your life for the rest of your life and will love you no matter what.
Hello. My fellow commissioners and I are here at the Lorraine County Dog Kennel on Hadaway Street, just south of Illyria City Discount Value City. We invite you to stop out and see the facility here. We have lots of dogs available for adoption. We also encourage all dog owners to register your dog each year and get a dog license. That's your dog's ticket home in case it gets lost. It has a number and can easily be identified so that your dog can be returned to you in case he or she might take a little walk and you are unaware of it.
Along with the regular licensing that the county requires for all dogs, we also have a special dog license. It's a Special Heart Medical Care License Tag for an additional $5. And the proceeds from that go to help us when we pick up a stray that's injured, hurt, or needs extreme medical care. It helps defer the cost for us. So next time you get your dog license, please pick up the Special Heart tag.
The Lorraine County Commissioners would like to welcome you to come down to the Lorraine County Dog Kennel. We also have a website that you can check out. Just click on Dogs to Adopt. There's plenty of dogs to choose from. It's like this little girl right here, this is Sadie. You can come down, make sure it's a good match for you, take the dog out, take it for a walk. But please, if you're thinking about adopting a dog, come out to the Lorraine County Dog Kennel and see if there's a match for you.
Give the Lorraine County Dog Kennel a call or check their website for photos of currently available dogs. Remember, your best friend is just waiting for you.
In 1787, the Continental Congress organized the lands from the Ohio River to the Mississippi into the Northwest Territories. In 1803, the first of these territories to become a state was Ohio. Ohio was in turn divided into various land grants, including the Connecticut Western Reserve in the northeast corner of the state. The Western Reserve included the area that is today Lorraine County. As Ohio gradually increased its counties to the present 88, the land we know as Lorraine County went through several changes. Until 1810, the area was split between Geoga and Portage Counties. When the area was being organized into Lorraine County in 1822, it was created out of land from Huron, Cuyahoga, and Medina Counties. At the time of its birth, Lorraine County included Olmsted Township, now in Cuyahoga County, Spencer and Homer Townships, now in Medina County, and Troy and Sullivan Townships, now in Ashland County. This map illustrates the county as it appeared at the time of Ohio's centennial. And although some of the townships have been absorbed by incorporation, it also represents the shape of Lorraine County today. Let's take a brief historical look at each of Lorraine County's 21 townships. In 1807, the Calvin Hodley and Herman Bronson families of Waterbury, Connecticut began the settlement of Columbia. After a three-month trek, the pioneers arrived in their new homeland in time to celebrate Christmas. The Bronsons, including their seven-month-old son, began that winter sheltered by their overturned bobsled wagon converted into a frontier lean-to. The mouth of the Black River also saw the beginning of its first settlement in 1807, when Azariah Beebe established a trading post for Nathan Perry. This area, which 20 years earlier had seen a short-lived Moravian mission, would gradually grow into the village of Charleston in the township called Black River. Years later, this township would be removed from county maps because of the incorporation of the city of Lorraine. Charleston adopted the county's name of Lorraine when the city was incorporated in 1874. The dramatic growth of the city was spurred on by the expanding fishing and shipbuilding industries. In 1894, when Tom Johnson brought his steel mill to town, Lorraine's destiny to be the county's largest city was assured. In 1813, the township of Ridgeville was officially organized. Three years earlier, members of the Beebe, Terrell, and Root families had established this new settlement they called Roots Town. The change to Ridgeville was decided upon to indicate the sand ridges that passed through the area and provided transportation routes and fertile farmland. The area around the intersection of Butternut Ridge and Roots Road, first called Briggs Corner, was by 1880 known as Fields Corners and was the site of the town's water well. With the growth of the city of North Ridgeville, the township of Ridgeville was incorporated out of existence. In 1810, Silas Wilmot, along with Asa and Ira Morgan, erected a cabin on Butternut Ridge, and the community later called Eaton Township was begun. Wilmot married Chloe Hubbard of Ashtabula, and they were given the cabin, thereby becoming the township's pioneering couple. When Ridgeville Township was organized in 1813, it included Eaton, which was at that time called Holbrook. While the area was still a part of Cuyahoga County, the township of Eaton was separated from Ridgeville. Its first officers were elected in 1823, while the township was in transition to the new Lorraine County. Amherst's township's founding can be traced to one Jacob Shoup. After first settling on the Black River, he moved in 1811 to the Beaver Creek. By 1815, he had erected a grist mill and the area's first distillery. Whiskeyville, today the intersection of Roots 58 and 113, earned its nickname as a center for the production of this important pioneer commodity. As the primary community of the township developed at the old spring, it came to be known as Amherst Corners. By 1836, the name Amherstville was recorded in the county offices, and in 1873, the town was incorporated as North Amherst. In 1909, the U.S. Postal Service had to choose between the villages of North and South Amherst. They chose the former, which then became the official and present-day Amherst. In 1917, in the northeast corner of the county, the township of Avon became another of Lorraine County's 21 townships to vanish due to city incorporation. In 1814, Wilbur Cahoon had arrived from Montgomery County, New York, to become the first to settle in what was then Troy Township of Cuyahoga County. The farming community grew around its power source, the French Creek. Development along the interurban line would incorporate the northern part of the township into the city of Avon Lake in 1911, with the remainder of the township becoming the Village of Avon in 1917. It was families such as the Burl, Day, and Roots who established themselves in the Sheffield area in 1815 and 16. The township of Sheffield would not actually be created until 1824, when the newly-elected Lorraine County Commissioners made the township one of the first acts of their administration. The land had been primarily in Cuyahoga County prior to the 1822 reorganization. The southwest corner of the township was in Huron County and is today the only place to find a small section still called Sheffield Township. The remainder of the area has been incorporated, like its neighbor Avon, with the north becoming Sheffield Lake and the south, the Village of Sheffield. In 1816, Colonel Henry Brown of Stockbridge, Massachusetts purchased a large tract of land known as Number Six, Range 19. Mr. Brown would later name the township after himself by simply adding "Helm" to his family name. Like the old Saxon "ham," the suffix meant "home." The Deacon Shepherd family were the first settlers when they arrived on July 4, 1817. The village of Brownhelm Mills located in Benjamin Bacon's Mill Hollow was one of three communities to develop. Bacon's Corners, or the center, was three miles east of the hollow, while just west of the hollow was Rugby, where stores, a church, a school, and the post office were located. The first settlers to the Grafton Township area were Jonathan and Grendal Rossen in 1816. Ten years later, the Rossens were forced to build a grist mill, or forfeit their land under their original agreement with the Western Reserve Land Company. Railroads and quarries were the greatest influence on the growth of the village the locals called Rossenville. The quarrying industry in particular was responsible for the influx of French-Canadian, Welsh, Irish, Polish, and German immigrants. In 1877, when the village was being incorporated, the name Rossenville was dropped in favor of the railroad station name of Grafton. Originally a part of Illyria Township, Carlisle was settled in 1816 by John Bacon of Wyndham County, Vermont. When the new Lorraine County was being organized in 1822, Carlisle Township became its own entity. LaPorte developed as the township village with Phineas Johnson as the first postmaster and hotel owner. In 1840, Anson Berman's Carlisle Nursery became the first of its kind in Lorraine County. Quarrying was another important industry of the township, as the sandstone blocks were used for city buildings as far away as Toronto. Founding father Heman Ely owned over 10,000 acres of the land that would be developed into the township of Illyria and the city, which also bears his family name. In 1817, Artemus Beebe headed a work crew that came to establish a new village at the Y of the Black River branches. Mills were constructed and the main street cleared. Beebe's crew also erected a home for Mr. Ely at Broad and East Bridge Streets, and a home for himself across the street, which became the Beebe Tavern. Both structures avoided demolition until well into the 20th century. In 1822, Mr. Ely spearheaded the movement to create Lorraine County. He donated the land for the county courthouse, thus influencing the choice of Illyria as the county seat. Mr. Ely's little village would develop into a city with a varied industrial base as well as the center of government for Lorraine County. Simon Durand came to America as an interpreter for Revolutionary War hero, French general Lafayette. Durand remained in the new nation, and in the winter of 1817, moved from New York State to the 160 acres he had purchased south of Brownhelm. Ten years later, the population of the area was enough to support the formation of a new township. With the southern portion ceded to Brighton and the northern portion annexed from Brownhelm, the township of Henrietta was created in 1827. Although New England families represented the majority of settlers to the area in 1818, one of the pioneers was William Welling of Montgomery County, New York. History is not clear if the community was named in honor of Welling or for the famous English Duke of Wellington, hero of Europe's recent Napoleonic wars. With the coming of the railroad, Wellington grew into an agricultural marketplace, and in fact, was the nation's leader in cheese production from 1870 to 1900. The county fair, now located in Wellington, helps to continue the depiction of small-town America shown in native son Archibald Willard's famous painting, "The Spirit of '76." In 1818, Joseph Sage and the family of his son-in-law, John Laborie, journeyed through a severe winter from Connecticut to their new homestead in Huntington Township. More pioneering families came to the area, and by 1822, the population was such that the Medina County Commissioners incorporated the township, using the Huntington, Connecticut hometown of many of the settlers as its new name. Lumber, grain, and cheese dominated the local economy. In 1824, when Lorraine County came into full operation, Huntington was transferred from Medina County. The citizens of Old Russia Township that had been first settled in 1818 requested detachment from Black River Township in 1825. The Town and College of Oberlin were founded in 1833 and would grow to dominate the area. The Oberlin concept combined a Christian community and a Christian coeducational institute. Through the influence of founders John Shipford and Philo Stewart, New York businessman Arthur Tappan, and noted evangelist Charles Finney, the college would become not only coed, but also multiracial, and the nation's leader in the abolitionist movement. The independent spirit that created the first Russia Township was evident once again in 1992, as New Russia Township detached itself from Oberlin. In 1820, the Peter Penfield family began the permanent settlement of the area he had first selected in the fall of 1818. Penfield Township's organizational election was held in April of 1825. The first religious service was held in 1826, and the first school was in session in the summer of 1829. The township's first post office put the emphasis on "post" and not "the office." As the Penfields lived well off the established mail route, a hollow tree near the river was used by the local residents for sending and receiving the mail. The township, with its fertile soil, grew into a part of Lorraine County's rich agricultural heritage. In the fall of 1820, Abner Loveland Jr. became the first permanent settler of Brighton. Within a year, the families of Joseph Kingsbury and Abner Loveland Sr. had arrived and the new community began to grow. With elections held in the spring of 1823, Brighton Township was being organized at the same time the area was being transferred from Medina to Lorraine County. Like much of the new county, Brighton was essentially agricultural. Although Pittsfield's first settlers arrived in 1813, the area was considered too dangerous because of the British and Indian activity connected to the War of 1812. By 1820, the land was surveyed and Milton Whitney became the owner of a large parcel. Whitney arranged for the Waite brothers of Russia Township to become the first permanent settlers in the spring of 1821. By 1831, there were enough residents to request that the county incorporate a township independent of Wellington. Pittsfield was chosen as the township's name to honor the Massachusetts hometown of many of the area's pioneers. LeGrange Township's first settler was Nathan Clark, who in the fall of 1825, established his new homestead on the east branch of the Black River. By the summer of 1826, 14 more settlers had arrived. The name "LeGrange," which is French for "the farm," was chosen to honor French general Lafayette, as it was also the name of his country estate. In 1827, the area was separated from Carlisle Township and reorganized with elections in April into the new township of LeGrange. By 1828, the township was relocated and moved to the new town. By 1875, the center had grown into a village also incorporated as Le Grange. The pioneer settler of the Camden area was Leonard Clark. Over the next four years, other families moved into the area, including Roswell Babcock, who built the first frame house in 1833. Early on, the area was divided between Henrietta and Brighton Townships. In 1835, the new township of Camden was created by the county commissioners and the first elections held in April of 1836. When the first post office was established in 1835, the community was called Panalise. The name was changed to Camden, then later to North Camden. In 1852, the Lake Shore and Michigan Southern Railroad called its station Binghamton. But that was soon changed as the town adopted the name Kipton. Kipton's more important connection to the railroad was a tragic collision in 1891. The wreck was instrumental in the creation of standardized or railroad time. Rochester was the last township within the present-day boundaries of Lorraine County to be settled. Stephen Babcock brought his family from Massachusetts in the spring of 1832 to settle on land he had prepared the previous year. The area grew quickly, and by 1835, the commissioners formed a new township with the first elections held in April of 1836. The township's farming and related businesses grew with the population. By 1880, close to 700 citizens lived in the area. The population shifted from Rochester's center to Rochester Station when the Big Four Railroad came through the township. The small-town boom would turn to bust when the railroad eliminated Rochester as a scheduled stop. The depot would be used as a schoolhouse, as the home of the Rochester Rod and Gun Club, and today, as the home of the Rochester Historical Society.